It is a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood on May 21st, 2013 at 6:00 PM at the City Council Chambers Building. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Councilmember Dowling?
Here.
Councilmember Ilinski?
Here.
Councilmember Norman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Piper?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here.
And Councilmember Howagie is absent. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I haven't heard from Councilmember Howagie up to this point. I don't know if anyone else on the council has either. Okay, the next item is Pledge of Allegiance, and we have Baron Najad with us this evening to lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My colleagues on the City Council have a little certificate to show. The next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless a specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz?
Madam Mayor, the councilmembers are just a reminder to our public that effective Wednesday, tomorrow, 3/27, the AAAM City of Cottonwood National Force in Yavapai County is implementing a fire restriction, open fire restriction. So this will be on our Facebook and web page. You can look at the details until further notice when these winds, there is a fire Also, I just want to advise the public that our summer recreation programs are open for registration, and we have a variety of great programs for kids all through the summer. So be sure to get in and get registered for those. You can get more information on our website by assuming on the applications. And we're being told that our new parking lot that's been going on at the end of the street should be done and hopefully available for use by the second week, at the conclusion of the second week of June. And then I'd like to boast that there was a little bit of a competition this weekend between myself and the city manager of Sedona, who was at the multiple sclerosis ride, and he has conceded that I beat him. And there's probably no wonder he was out.
Probably not appropriately addressed for riding, but...
So tell us the story behind the outfit. There must have been a reason that...
It's Sedona.
Picture of them?
Yeah, with their tutus on.
Okay.
There were like 20 people with tutus on.
Team from Sedona.
Okay, so it was a Sedona team, and he was part of it.
But a very successful event. They had over 700 riders. I talked to the representative from MS today, and they were very pleased, very happy with the support they got, and the feedback they got from the riders was very positive. So hopefully we'll see them back again next year. And we're already working to get our team bigger and better and stronger for next year.
So the deal was that if you won, that Mayor Adams and city manager Ernesto would have to come to the Old Town Mission and serve some time. And if the city manager from Sedona won, then you and I were supposed to go up to the Sedona Community Center and do our time.
Right.
So it looks like the Old Town Mission will be benefiting from the...
No benefit. Absolutely.
Anything else?
That's it, Madam Mayor.
Councilmembers. Mr. Pratt?
Yes, Friday evening, I had the honor of being in the city in the auctioneer at the Women in Purses event to support the Boys and Girls Club of Pillsbury, Women in Cottonwood. And I've learned a lot about purses, and it was a very successful one. And I've taken a lot of...
More than you would ever want to...
I've taken a lot of kidding about it before asking me to wear my purses these days. But it was a very successful event for our organization. We really needed our outfit, and so it's kind of been a lot of fun and we raised some money for it.
Mr. Dowling?
I also had the pleasure of participating in the MS bike ride. I didn't get done 75 miles, but I did do a personal best of 23, and that was a really long mile.
I was gonna say, I didn't find much pleasure in it by the time I was through.
Yeah, no, every time somebody passed me going up the hill, all they could say was, "It's all downhill from here." After a while, the curb looked like a pillow. But it was a really great event. I think I met the person who traveled the furthest together was from Germany.
Wow.
He had flown into Vegas and had just worked into the schedules, and he was here for that, and was looking forward to coming back next year. We had representatives, we had people here from 22 states. Quite a large, you know, quite a large impact. There was a few people that raised enough every year where they'd get their pick of where they wanted to go. And I specifically talked to a couple, and they chose this one specifically just because of the, just because of what it is. So it was really a pleasure to meet everybody out there and ride with them. It was a great bunch of people, and I look forward, like the city manager said, I look forward to getting a stronger team next year and really putting a whack on it. But it was a great, it was a great time, and I really appreciate everybody coming out.
Okay, I'll take it from there. Cottonwood Fire Department presents free CCR and CPR training for your business. And he came to the chamber office the other week ago Monday, and the firefighters instructed, I can't remember, it's seven or eight, no, maybe there was 10 or 11 of us, in the CCC, and it was very informative, it was very enlightening. You don't have to do the mouth-to-mouth with this when there's a cardiac arrest. The chief is here, he might want to say a little bit more about it, but you can schedule a training by calling the fire department at (928) 634-2741. It was, it took us about an hour and a half for all of us to learn what we were doing with the dummies, or the...
Manikins.
Half a manikins. But it was...
They preferred we called manikins.
Manikins, not dummies. I guess that's a slur, isn't it?
They'd get upset if you called them.
They didn't talk back, but it was really, it was really, really, it's easy steps, and anybody can do it. That's what I was so appreciative of. Even an old lady like me can do this. So you want to elaborate on it?
Yeah, just a little bit on that. Thank you, Vice Mayor. The fire department has implemented a program in conjunction with SHARE. It's a statewide program. The idea behind it is we're trying to get CPR widespread in our community. We've teamed up with the Chamber of Commerce here in Cottonwood, and we're offering up to all the businesses and organizations in the town, starting with Chamber. It don't have to be a Chamber member for us to come in and do it, but working through the Chamber, to get into all of the businesses, offering up free CPR classes. So they don't, this doesn't, this does not provide you a CPR card if you need that for work through the American Heart Association, but this program was put together, Continuous Compression CPR, out of the University of Arizona by some physicians down there who did some in-depth research, finding that by just doing continuous compressions without the respirations, they were seeing dramatic increases in saves, especially in the lay public around non-professional rescuer means. And they've, some of the cities have seen improvements in out-of-hospital cardiac arrests, up eight, tenfold increases in live saves. So we're trying to permeate our community with CPR, again, to see those survival rates increase in our community, and as the Vice Mayor said, contact us at the fire department, the businesses, we encourage our businesses to contact us. We will come into your business, we will bring the manikins, there's no cost to you, we just need about an hour to an hour and a half of the time to instruct your employees and employers and employees in the CPR, and it's very simple to learn, a lot easier than a lot of people went through the eight to 10-hour classes years ago. And so, again, we, any questions?
You don't have to know the numbers, you don't have to count anymore. I took the classes probably 30-some-odd years ago, and it was cumbersome, and it was, it went on for a week or two, three weeks, to get through all the classes on it. This, an hour and a half, and we learned just as much.
That's what we found, people don't remember all of the things, and they're afraid to do CPR if there's too many rules, so to speak. They found that by just doing compressions, you move enough air, and it's becoming very effective. So.
Thank you.
Do have one thing.
Okay, Mr. Ilinski?
I just wanted to mention that I ran into a Cottonwood resident and a business owner the other day, and she was very upset by the business registration fee increase, and I promised I'd bring it up at the call of the public, not to reopen, you know, a wound or anything, but she was upset by how we handled it, and I explained to her that the notices of apology were sent out through the chamber, she didn't receive one, and I promised that I would express her frustration with that at the council meeting. She didn't like my answer, and maybe city staff can give her a better one, but I gave her as much information as I had.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, anybody else have... I know you did something on Friday.
What?
You pedaled a bicycle.
That's right, Friday morning, yeah, that's right, yeah. Rode up, Mayor and I rode our vintage bicycles down from...
Viejo Park?
Yeah, and for the Bike to Work Week celebration, we were attended by Jesse and...
Yeah, there was so much riding over the weekend, I forgot all about Friday.
That was the fun ride. It was all downhill, actually.
The curbs didn't look nearly so ferocious on that ride.
Yeah, there was probably 15, 15 of us, it was a good ride.
Okay, so yeah, we had Baron Najad was with us, and Casey Rooney on our staff, and then councilmember-elect Randy Garrison, I believe. So, yeah, it was a fun ride. I'm always glad when it's over. Every year, I get my old bike out. So everyone's heard the story, the bike is the bike I got for my 11th birthday, and I've had a bike or two since then, you know, but they're no longer with me. They kind of just wore out, but this bike, this bike was, I got it in Sierra Vista, it moved to Iowa, and it's back in Cottonwood now, so it's been around the United States even, and it's a Western Flyer. Okay, so I attended the A.D.O. board meeting on May 10th along with Casey Rooney and Lana Tolleson. Casey is our Economic Development Director for the city, and Lana is the Chamber Board President. And we were able to advocate together with Camp Verde's mayor-elect, city manager Russ Martin, and a number of the city council members. We had a teen center meeting on May 13th, and we still haven't located a meeting place, but what we decided to do for now is to collect information on all the teen activities that are going on in the city for the summer. And we're going to probably create a website with that, so a teen could just click in and see what there is to do for that day or that week. So I'll get the Leisure Times from our Parks and Rec Department, and that will give me probably a lot of information on what's happening with teens, and we can check with the Boys and Girls Club, and then all the churches have things going on, too. So we thought if we could try to, and the schools have things, try to get all that information in one place, at least we'd have a start on things for them to do. On May 15th, councilmembers Terrence Pratt and Linda Norman and I attended the VFW Peace Officers Memorial Ceremony at the Veterans Memorial Park in Riverfront Park. And they read off all of the names of the peace officers who have lost their lives, gosh, way back into, I think it was the 1800s that we heard.
1891 was one of them.
1891 was one, and 1910, I remember. And also Commander Isinga was there. But the VFW really goes to a lot of work to create this memorial for our peace officers. Then I took a walk around Old Town with Casey Rooney and leaders from Payson, and they have heard about Old Town's success during these economic times and wanted to find out more. So I wasn't able to stay for the whole tour, but for a little while, I was able to go along. And one of the people there owns a goat cheese, a goat cheese business over in Payson. And one was the college dean, I'm trying to think of the other one. I think she was on the chamber. So for the bike, MS bike ride, councilmember Dowling and I welcomed everybody, and I'm glad to hear there were 700 people, 700 bike people that we welcomed. The O'Connor House is having a meeting on tomorrow, and if anybody would like to go, it's Wednesday, May 22nd, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM at the Jewish community Sedona Verde, Jewish community of Sedona Verde Valley. And Elva Kour and Nancy Haas will be there to talk about the O'Connor House Civic Engagement Projects, and our local school superintendent Barbie Uran will present her plans for introducing ICE Civics to the curriculum in the Cottonwood Oak Creek School District. Several other speakers will also address projects and issues related to civic engagement in the community. On Monday, the 27th, at the Cottonwood Cemetery at 11:00 AM, the VFW will be holding a Memorial Day Ceremony, and Chief Kirkendall is going to give the speech for the event, so I'm looking forward to that. So if members of the community, or council, or staff can attend that, I've heard him speak on September 11th at the senior center, and I know he's a good patriotic speaker. June 9th is Cancer Survivors' Day at the Verde Valley Medical Center, and they posted this on their Facebook, so I'm assuming from that that the public's invited. The event is Sunday, June 9th, at 11:00 AM to 1:30 PM at the Pine Shadows Clubhouse, and it's meeting other survivors while enjoying a Hawaiian lunch, photo opportunities, raffle items, and more. And survivors of cancer need to RSVP at (204) 4993. And again, this is sponsored by the Cancer Centers of Northern Arizona Healthcare, Sedona Campus, and the Verde Valley Medical Center. Okay, moving on to the next item is the proclamation for Mental Health Month. Is there anyone here in the audience to pick up this proclamation? I received this from Richard Danner at the Guidance Clinic, who made the request for the proclamation. Whereas on behalf of the citizens of Cottonwood, I am pleased to join the Northern Arizona Regional Behavioral Health Authority and local mental health professionals and peers in celebrating May 2013 as Mental Health Awareness Month in our community. And whereas, mental health and substance abuse disorders affect millions of Americans of all ages, races, and ethnic backgrounds, and result in significant medical, societal, and economic costs. And whereas acknowledging May 2013 as Mental Health Awareness Month offers advocates of mental health and substance abuse prevention, treatment, and recovery, the opportunity to help our citizens reflect on ways to prevent mental health crises, the existence of effective treatment alternatives, and the celebratory fact that people can and do recover. And whereas thousands of behavioral health care professionals and peers have dedicated their lives to educating the public and policymakers about prevention, treatment, and recovery. Now therefore I, Mayor Diane Jones, do hereby proclaim May 2013 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Cottonwood, and encourage all citizens to support this year's theme, recover wellness by supporting men, women, and youth who have chosen the courageous path of recovery from mental health and substance abuse disorders. The next item is called to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per ARS 3843102H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. And we have the Yavapai County Americor's Progress Report tonight from Adrian Martin.
Hello, council, mayor, and vice mayor. I know you guys are probably getting really sick and tired of seeing me.
Oh, never.
I'm on vacation.
We love, we love to see you, Adrian.
What I'm passing around to you today, and I'll also leave back to referring members of the community who'd like to see him as well, is the hot-off-the-pressed, brand-new Yavapai County Americor Project Progress Report, which shows all of the work that we've been able to do in the entirety of Yavapai County since October, all the way through the end of April. So these are our numbers from there. What you have here is going to be kind of a recap of what we do in the community, our days of service, such as Martin Luther King Day, our Americor Week, where we partnered with Yes!, the ARC here this past year, as well as a story straight from the mouth of one of our members for how this experiences changed their lives while helping others, as well as some statistics as well. So just a little heads up, we've been able to fully leverage 1,834 volunteers in the Yavapai County. We were able to help 1,490 disadvantaged youth and provide independent living services to 1,081 individuals. That's just a couple of them. So, brand-new, I just made these last week. And that's it. We'd like to really thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all of the support that we get from Cottonwood and the council and the community members here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Okay, then, that was the only, would anyone else from the public like to speak? If not, we'll close the floor to the public and move on to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 7th, 2013. I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second. Councilmember Ilinski made the motion, councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Old Business, item number eight. Number one is ordinance number 595 amending the zoning map of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, for a parcel of land totaling approximately 15 acres in size, so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof, from the present zoning of AR 43 Agricultural Single Family Residential to R 2 Single Family Multiple Family, second and final reading. Mr. Gaylert?
Mayor and council, good evening. This is the second reading of ordinance 595. Once again, pertains to a zone change, 15 acres owned by Megas Union High School District Number Four. It's located at the southwest corner of East Fir and Camino, Camino Way, Camino Real, excuse me, in Cottonwood. This was part of your agenda also on May 7th, as part of the first reading. The city council also approved the resolution amending the Cottonwood General Plan, land use designation for this parcel from public facilities to medium-density residential, basically in support of a project which had also been proposed by the school district having to do with the multifamily development of about 165 units on the 15-acre site. The project was subject to review by the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 18th, at which time the recommended approval of the project, subject to final site plan approval at some future date by whoever the developer may be. And at that point, there would be a requirement to address traffic drainage, buffering improvements associated with the project. The site proposal was also part of a community meeting that was scheduled by the high school district on February 15th. It was hosted in the cafeteria of the high school, basically to air the project and provide the public with an opportunity to participate and provide whatever comments they might have regarding the proposal. The adjacent property owners were notified on a number of occasions regarding the associated meetings, the hearings that have been scheduled regarding the requests. The site has been posted and advertised regarding all of the meetings as well. Some of the issues that were raised along the way pertain to traffic drainage, again, buffering, the type of architecture that would be associated with the proposal. And as mentioned in your staff memo, these items would be addressed as part of the final site plan submittal at a future date, subject to approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. At this time, the staff is asking for council's approval of ordinance 595. This is the second final reading. It's outlined by the ordinance itself, the recommendation for approval was subject to the following stipulations. Just want to read them into the record. Stipulation number one, again, that a final site plan be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, together with building elevations, grading, draining, excuse me, surfacing, and landscape plans prior to issuance of any permits. Second, that the total number of residential units be limited to 165. Third, that the final site plan establish methods for buffering adjacent to residential development located to the south and west boundaries. Fourth, that access points adjacent to the first street intersection be eliminated, and that other access drives be consolidated to the extent feasible. Five, that all required rights of way and utility easements be dedicated by plat or otherwise recorded, as may be required by the city. Any division of this property into four or more lots would require plat approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council. Six, that any subsequent minor divisions of this property also be subject to review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Seven, that the developer provide traffic and drainage studies and be responsible for all related improvements determined to be necessary to offset impacts of the resulting development, per ordinance 144. Eight, that a building permit be issued within five years, or the action would be null and void. Nine, that all other code review comments be addressed. Madam Mayor, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, you said the local residents were invited to a meeting or invited to respond. Did you get many responses?
We had about seven folks show up to the community meeting at the high school in February. There was some commentary that was offered. Most of the discussion surrounded the questions regarding the site proposal itself. The primary issues and concerns had to do with the volume of traffic that would be generated, and what becomes of the intersection.
It's a busy intersection.
Yep. Also had some concern about the treatment of the west boundary of the project. It butts up alongside of the Verde Village unit at that point. That's actually the city boundary right there.
So there weren't really any objections then? Major objections?
Major objections, mostly curiosities, because once again, we don't have a final site plan to respond to, or any architecture that we can use to kind of respond to that as well.
And that, at that time, when we get to that stage, that's when we'll talk about the dust during construction, I mean...
Yes.
And all of those things that were mentioned here, too.
The clauses are very conceptual.
Things that we can't actually do something about. Mr. Ilinski?
And we've capped the amount of units they can have on the property, but a big concern of mine is buffering on that, on the property that butts the lower-density residential areas. Now, do you think it's possible to still have a wide margin, you know, of buffering and still allow that many units?
I think the units could be consolidated in a different manner than has been presented to this point. I think you could probably require things like a wider setback along that boundary. There's wash, the channel's right through the middle of the project, it sort of isolates the northwest corner. I think that portion of the property could be reduced in density or eliminated altogether as part of the final site plan review.
I just wouldn't want that to come up later, and we've promised them they can have a certain amount of units, but that wouldn't be possible unless they put them right against the property line.
Yeah.
Mr. Pratt?
And I just wanted to add, this does help our local high school, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
And with that point, I would like to ask if Mr. Foist would like to make any comments.
It does help our local high school, and it gives us the advantage of, within the next five years, we had been approached, we didn't think that the offers that were, people were talking about dollar-wise was fair for our community to accept. We came back with the help of George, Mike Gardner, Doug, yourselves, City Zoning. We've now put the school in a very positive position to go out and be approached again for selling that property. Tim, your question, we'd love to have a 20-foot buffer in the back... Tim, your question, we'd love to have a 20-foot buffer in the back vegetation and make it where it's, we'll say, user-friendly. We also wanted the community to understand that, just like our city today, there's a level of concern about where do we go from here in Arizona without public education funding coming? We are now 100% funded by taxpayers. We're just like Sedona. Our state aid is all accumulated by our local community. This project, we hope, can alleviate some of that burden on our people. Misadas is here tonight to thank you from the high school as well, but I want to tell you a story that, because as public employees, I don't think we hear enough positive things. I'm going back to Kansas, and I'm retiring, and I sold my home. The lady I sold my home to could buy a home anywhere she wants. She's a CEO, retiring out of Memphis, Tennessee, coming to this community by a very odd path. They were looking in Scottsdale. They went to Prescott. They were staying three nights in Prescott, so they came over here. Obviously, you go through Jerome. Then they went to our neighbors up the road, and then they came and stayed an afternoon here. She said, "Your community was the most friendly community that I visited. Your community looks like it's moving forward and progressive." And she had a glass of wine, she said, not a bottle, because I kidded her about that, at the rendezvous. She met some people that were local, and she said, told her brother who was with her, she said, "I'm moving here to Cottonwood. So what you're doing as mayor, council, city manager, police chief, you're doing it well. And I wanted to just thank you, because a total stranger moved here because of the feeling she got from old-town Cottonwood." Now, folks, that's pretty good. And it's not a made-up story. It's a real story. And I think it tells a lot about what you are doing. Helping the school, I told Doug this afternoon at a little retirement gathering for me, I said, "I want the school to be the hub of the community always, wherever I'm at." And I believe our school and city working together, well, you can take this for what it's worth. Dan Engler, who he and I had our fights the first two years, told me the other night, put his arm around me, and he said, "Thank you for bringing the pride back to Mingus. That goes with our city." And this lady has brought the pride to Mingus, and you only have two minutes to thank them. But thank you for helping our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to extend those thanks, mayor, vice mayor, and members of the council. It's been a true rewarding partnership with the city of Cottonwood and Mingus Union High School, whether it be through increased police, safety officers, Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission, or just the hand that the city continually extends to our students, so we always have that partnership. You see it evident around town in functions such as the Vietnam War, et cetera. Without that, that community builds our future. Without that, both Mingus Union High School and I don't think the city of Cottonwood would be where we are today. And I want to extend those thanks as I do leave our city. I'll be leaving this city for the city of Mesa, trying to do some of the same things in a much larger environment. So I want to thank each and every one of you for your support over the years.
And I think I could speak on behalf of the council and say that we sure appreciate working with both of you. You're going to be greatly missed, both of you. You've just been awesome to work with and partner with. I mean, even speaking of the Vietnam War, we asked your students and your art classes to participate and become partners with posters, and they just did such a fantastic job. So we have worked well together.
Yes.
And it's appreciated from this end also. So thank you, and best wishes as you both seek your fortunes and for a great new life, and I'm sure you'll have one.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. It's not going to be the same without you. Okay, so back to Ordinance Number 595. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance? If not, I'd entertain a motion, Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve Ordinance Number 595.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion. Mr. Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Deputy Clerk, please read Ordinance Number 595 by title only.
Ordinance Number 595, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning map of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, for a parcel of land totaling approximately 15 acres in size, so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof, from the present zoning of AR-43 Agricultural Single Family Residential to R-2 Single Family Multiple Family. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Item number one is new liquor license application submitted by Blatimer Costa Guerra, applicant for Kinsay Bar and Cantina located at 747 South Main Street. Item number two is approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Cottonwood Oak Creek School District for the joint funding of a shared youth program coordinator. Are there any items that the council would like to pull for discussion? Are there any items that the members of the public would like to pull for discussion? If not...
Madam Mayor, I would just add that if anybody's planning to go to Kinsay, you may want to get reservations. They were packed all week as soon as they opened, so another successful restaurant in Cottonwood.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, Councilmember Norman made the motion. The Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one is approval of a professional services agreement with Heinfeld, Meach, and Company for financial consulting services for the city. Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor and Council, let me get this thing out of here. Is that out of order? This particular item is a request for some support from our auditors on a couple of issues. One of them is assisting us to make sure that our accounting structure should be matching their accounting structure, so we don't have issues. In the past, we've had issues and discussions over why do you have an account number in one area versus another area? Those of you who may understand, our accounting structure was done by my predecessor, and we have, take for example, personnel matters. We have all the salaries and holiday pay on the top end of our accounting structure. And then at the bottom, we have all of our taxes. And not sure why it was set up that way, but our current system has been, was so archaic back then, it still is, and was nearly impossible to get that, well, it was impossible to make adjustments to those account numbers. And we're asking our auditors to come in and assist us and go ahead and redo our accounting structure now that we're putting in a new ERP system for the city of Cottonwood. When we do the conversion, we will have all our accounting structures straightened out, and they'll be able to import all that and make sure that it matches our auditor's accounting structure. At the end of the fiscal year, when we do our reports to them, we'll be able to do a lot of our reports that will match theirs exactly versus right now, we can't, we don't have the capability of doing that. It's a hodgepodge, and it takes too much staff time to try to figure out where all of the accounting numbers are coming from, and so we rely on their CAFER. This will make it a little bit easier for us to be able to run annual reports or monthly reports and also be able to match up with their reports. The other part of this also is we're asking them to come in and do an assessment of our internal controls. That was one of their write-ups to us. We have a small agency, and unfortunately, when you're as small as we are, there's only so many internal controls that we can, we can provide. But we wanted them to go ahead and give us an assessment and maybe give us some suggestions that we might have overlooked and try to improve our internal controls, possibly involve other departments as far as internal control processes. The whole idea is to make sure that we not only have one set of eyes looking at entries and, let's say, receipts coming in, making deposits, actually filling out the deposit slips. We don't want one person doing everything. We want to make sure that one person takes it in, the other one deposits the deposit slip, the other one goes ahead and makes, prepares the deposit to go out, the other one goes ahead and posts, and so forth. We need to have some sort of division in our work, and unfortunately, it's very difficult when you have a small staff. But we're asking them to go ahead and provide us with some sort of input so we can improve the process and hopefully get that off of our, check that off as one of the things that we keep getting written up every year over our processes.
That would be good.
They do not anticipate that this has a not-to-exceed number of about 26,200, and most of it is just basically labor, and it is a labor-intensive process. And we don't have, obviously, you already know, the issues that we have in the finance department right now, and we don't have the staffing to go ahead and do this internally. Kirsten and I have gone over the why we would like our accounting structure set up. That's a beginning process. They'll come in and start assisting us with making sure the accounting numbers match up and they're all grouped accordingly.
Any questions, Mr. Ilinski?
These are the folks who've been doing our audits for the last two years or so, is that right?
No, this coming year will be their second year. Last year was their first.
Okay.
Our previous auditor was with us for well over 12 years or so, 13 years.
Is that why we're using them for this contract?
Yes, it's a lot easier when they go out. They did go ahead and send us a letter asking us for one contact person, because if we all get involved, all of a sudden, there's potential conflicts. Though Kirsten is the lead person on it, she's passing everything through me before it actually goes out to them. So once it's assigned, they'll come in and everything will go directly through her.
But I mean, I guess what I'm getting is it makes sense to hire them instead of trying to find somebody that, another company to do this right, because they're familiar with the city?
Well, certainly. At this point in time, yes, that would be most appropriate.
And I think they know how they want us to do things so that they can audit us.
I'm just concerned, because weren't they out of Phoenix? I was just wondering how much of that is travel time? How much of their bill is going to be travel time?
The travel time should be minimal.
Okay.
It's just, it is labor-intensive, because you've got to go line by line, and if you've seen our accounting structure, it's pretty intense. But it is, it's mostly, a lot of it they can do by us just sending them our accounting structure and a lot of conversation. Now, internal control may be a little bit trickier, but it shouldn't be that much more. It's mostly, it is staff time.
Okay.
Mr. Pratt?
So they're familiar with our accounting already, and they're familiar, they're also have expertise at converting these kind of accounts to this new...
Yes.
Springbrook, is it called?
Springbrook, correct.
Yeah. And that's a new software system, and they're familiar with that.
They're, in this particular case, it's not, they've worked with Springbrook before. There aren't very many Springbrook systems in Arizona yet, but I know there's four, and they're a new company coming into the Arizona area. But they do know accounting structures, and that's where we need them to help us out with.
Any other questions by the council? Any comments from the public? I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve professional services agreement with Heinfeld, Meach, and Company PC for financial consulting services as outlined in the scope of work, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second.
Okay, the Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is approval of a professional services agreement with Pat Walker Consulting LLC for impact fee consulting. And we heard from Pat at our work session last week. And Mr. Rodriguez, will you please explain that item to the public?
Certainly, Mayor and Council. This is something that we don't have much of a choice in. If we want to continue to collect impact fees or development fees, as they're also called, we have to first prepare a study, set up an IIP infrastructure improvement plan. And the last time we did this was back in 2007. We're kind of under the gun, so we've got, I've known Pat Walker and the firm she's worked with for a number of years. We've never had to use her. The last time we did this, we did a lot of it, some of it internally, and some of it was down externally by a different firm. But bottom line is, we've got to get an impact fee study, and we are going to be looking at our water impact fees. We want to look at our wastewater impact fees, and they're going to go ahead and improve through the potential of any type of street impact fees in the future. We're kind of under the gun, because we've talked about this on and off internally, and it's kind of one of those things that we want to go ahead and continue to collect impact fees or go some other route. And bottom line, we really can't make a determination unless we actually go through a fee study. And this, I think that's the whole idea behind this fee, is one of two things. One, it'll determine whether we need to continue with impact fees and what our alternatives are. Or two, is it'll also allow us to get in the queue, so we make sure that if we do keep the impact fees, we will be able to collect them when the time comes. You've got certain deadlines. If we don't meet those deadlines, what happens is we cannot collect the fees until such time as the study is produced and actually adopted by the council. And that is a long, tedious process, too. So we want to go ahead and get her, Pat Walker, on board and get to putting this study together and get it to the council as soon as possible. We're talking probably a year out by the time we're almost done with this, so it won't be a very quick process. The fee study at this point in time, they're looking at a couple of phases. One of them, of course, will be collecting all the information and trying to piece all this information together into some kind of a cohesive manner. And then secondly, has also come up with all the analysis work involved with water, wastewater, and then, of course, potentially the street portion of it, if council chooses to do so. Currently, she's estimating the cost not to exceed $50,000 for this particular study. I think the last time we had the study, it was close to $100,000 when we did the study the last time.
I want, I want the public, the citizens of Cottonwood, to understand that the legislature imposed this unfunded mandate on the citizens of Cottonwood. I don't really get why we need to do this, because water and wastewater impact fees are no-brainers, as Councilmember Pratt would say, but this is going to be up to 50,000 bucks. I want the citizens to know it's an unfunded mandate by the legislature who claims that they're for less government, so...
Certainly, Mayor. Just wanted also to add to that, that one of the issues that really started prompting this was not necessarily water or wastewater, it was the communities that were collecting development fees for libraries, police departments, fire departments, parks, and also a lot of their M&amp;L, which obviously is not part of, though it is an impact, it's not really an appropriate charge as far as the city of Cottonwood is concerned. We've always tried to be conservative and kept it down to just two really essential items, which is water and wastewater. And again, the streets is an iffy thing. We've never had to use it. We'd like to explore it, but that doesn't mean it's going to go anywhere.
Mr. Dowling?
To dovetail on the mayor's point, we're not the only ones. Basically, the entire state is scrambling for this service right now. So we're probably, you were probably lucky if we can find anybody to do this with us and for us, to a point, right? As far as I could tell from the last time, we had the last meeting, the services of these people are pretty much in dire need now because of the influence of the legislature and the state, putting this demand on everybody.
Now, mind you, the $50,000 is really not that much, considering the last time we did it, it was quite a bit more than this. So she's, I think she's been pretty reasonable to us. As a matter of fact, she's made some trips and some long-winded calls with us, because we do get a little long-winded at times, and she hasn't charged us for us. She just said it's happy to go ahead and put this, put us into the queue. Mind you, she did say, "I got to get you in the queue as quickly as possible."
Right.
So I'm not complaining about her charges, because as you say, they're half of what the study was a few years back. That's not the point. It's the point of the legislature creating this convoluted, difficult document, putting a one-size-fits-all on every city and town, all 91 cities and towns in the state, and having to create this expense when it's unnecessary. having to create this expense when it's unnecessary, in my personal opinion. But it is what it is and we have to do it. It's the law.
And I assume she's familiar with the state law?
Yes, they are. As a matter of fact, I
Help us jump through the hoops.
Steve has also brushed up on it. There's, it can't, it's
She was involved in the discussions about drafting the legislation and negotiating it with other interest groups that really moved it through the legislature.
I guess you were absent for that, weren't you?
Yeah, I wasn't feeling well that evening.
Why you were, okay, so, yeah, she was, definitely seemed like she knew exactly what she was doing and had a lot of background and experience and explained a lot of things that were pretty difficult. So it seemed to me that she had a handle on it very, very much so.
Madam Mayor, to the extent we will or will consider continuing the impact fee program, I think we'll be fortunate to have Pat working with us.
Absolutely, I agree. Are there any comments from the public on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the professional services agreement with Pat Walker Consulting LLC for impact fee consulting and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second. Okay, and there's no amount in here? That's okay? It doesn't?
The amount is not to exceed, oh, on the
It's not in the motion?
On the motion.
It's part of the record.
Okay, it's all right. Okay, so, did you second that, Vice Mayor? Okay, so council member Norman made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. The next item is request from Christine Salas and Christie Delaney of the Cottonwood Clippers to reduce or waive the Cottonwood Swim Team's operational fees for use of the city's outdoor pool for the 2013 season. And we have, are you Christine or Christie?
I'm Christie.
Christie, okay. Christie Delaney.
Yes. I'm the secretary of the Cottonwood Clippers and I'm joined by Christine Salas and Beth Bangman, the treasurer. We're coming today for a request for help reducing or waiving the fees for the pool operational expenses that the Clippers are charged to use the pool. A little bit of background about the Clippers, if you don't know, we are a recreational swim team. As of tonight, actually, we're 131 swimmers strong. So we are right now reaching out to kids between the ages of seven and 18, all skill levels. So we have swimmers who are just barely getting across the pool, all the way to kids that are swimming with Mingus High School. We are all led by a volunteer board and we are participating in fundraisers every year in order to raise money. And we've been doing so over the last, at least four years that I've been involved with the swim program. And each year, we've been trying to save money and trying to look for a project that we thought would benefit not just the Clippers, but the community as well. We go out to swim meets, at least six, we usually do about a half dozen every year, and all over northern Arizona and up into Kingman, as far as we travel. And while we're out and about, we look at the other swimming pools and we see some of the shade structures that they have at those pools. And we thought that that would maybe be a project that we would be able to look into. So we went ahead and we approached the city and we were asked to get three bids, which we did. And those bids were from companies locally and from Phoenix. And those bids ranged anywhere from $12,000 to $25,000. And we were looking at shade structures similar to the shade sails. And we decided, after we'd gotten all the bids, we actually narrowed our choice down to the Picture Window, which is a locally owned and operated business here. It's operated by Janet Layfield. And she would be working in conjunction with Total Building Systems, which is Larry Pritchard. The current structure at the pool, if any of you have been there recently, was actually installed by Larry Pritchard. And currently, it has a metal structure, a metal roof on the top. And as you can see from your proposals that I handed out to each of you, we would be looking to have the existing structure extended three feet towards the pool and having that metal roof removed and having shade material put onto the top. And then having posts installed in concrete outside of the fences and then the shade structures, they would be tensioned shade sails that would extend from the existing structure out to those posts. Janet had, incidentally, actually installed the shades at Mingus Union High School. So if you've seen those shades recently, she actually did that work. So that is, that is, we feel that this would be a project that would benefit the community greatly. Not only would it be benefiting the Clippers as we use it during the season, it would be benefiting, we would be willing to keep it up throughout the Mingus swim season, which usually goes into the first of October, as well as all of the children that take swimming lessons at the pool and any, any patrons of the pool that use it during open swim. With that, I'd like to hand the floor over to Beth Bangman. She's just going to talk a little bit about what we are requesting from the city. She's the treasurer, so she tosses it.
I just want to go over the last page of your handout, which kind of spells out what exactly we're asking for. It's a cost breakdown and the Picture Window bid was $13,256. There's an estimated engineering cost of $600 to $900 for a total cost of $14,156. What we're asking from the city is if they would waive our $4,000 pool use fee for the 2013 swim season. And so that way, our net cost would be about $10,156. And we're also requesting the city of Cottonwood cover the fees for the, for the building And like Christie said, she said it too, but we've been saving for four years on this. We have two fundraisers during the year and we also have business sponsors. We usually try and get about 10 business sponsors. And we aren't able to save all our fundraising, we have to use some of our fundraising money for operational, but we do save, try and save some and we've been putting it toward, you know, doing some sort of improvement or major purchase.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, so the 4,000 is really not a contribution, it's just a waiver of that yearly fee. And how much were the building permits that we would be waiving?
I don't know.
Just approximately? Okay.
I think it was like less than $500, but I'm not entirely sure.
And I think your survey really does show that not only do the Cottonwood Clippers benefit a lot of the young people in our community, and I know a lot of the kids who have come up through the system.
Yeah, we actually had that survey done by CPA out of Sedona. And he actually conducted it and did the results, so.
So you're benefiting kids, but you're also benefiting the city by bringing people here who spend money here and contribute to our sales tax.
Yes.
So I think you're a great organization for the city and I almost think this one's a no-brainer.
I'd like to invite our staff to maybe comment on this if they would. Thank you very much. And thank you for all you do. We appreciate it.
I have a real quick question. Is there a specific reason to remove the existing metal roof and replace it with a shade?
Um, it heats.
It heats? It's hot? Okay, that's all. That's what I thought, I was just curious.
We actually went, we actually went through like two different fabrics. The first bit that we got, it was actually the lowest bit. The second was actually the two sails, which is a completely thick, like you can see on the paneling. And then the other two kind of gave us a different perspective, said that mesh is the way to go. It will keep up, it's going to rain, but for one, we reproved that a little bit, it kind of just
Makes an oven? Okay, fantastic, thanks.
All right, council, as it pertains to just kind of giving you a background, a little bit of information, I know that we just, we've just recently gone through quite a, probably, I guess you would say, a level of peering into the recreation center and the operations costs of the recreation center. And though I don't want to be negative as it pertains to various projects within our city, I do know that as we look at operations, we set our operations fees separate from our project fees. If we don't have the money in order to pay for operations or our bills, then we don't, or I mean, you know, we have, we have to do that first and then we set aside any money that we have for projects. But one of the things that, that I want to let council know is, pool costs keep rising every year. And we're seeing about $156,500 right now on an annual basis for our pool operations. These costs continue to go up. And I guess I'll, I'll be, is that the Rudy advocate? Or, yeah, I guess that, seeing that Rudy's kind of conflicted because he has kids that are in the Cottonwood Clippers program, I'm going to be kind of the negative here tonight. As it pertains to this is, you know, right now, we are, we're basically charging a very low fee, $4,000 a year. It comes down to about $2.18 per lap lane per hour of use. Normal fees throughout the state of Arizona are between $8 and $15 a lap lane. So we are charging very minimally already. The other thing I wanted to make sure of that we're going over is, is that, again, as we looked into that window of the recreation center, looked at cost recovery and where we are, we had to eliminate a position. And, you know, we don't want to backtrack any further. It seems like we just got set here just recently as it pertains to the high school, meaning the high school to pay and the Cottonwood Clippers to pay, and now it seems like we want to backtrack again. And so I guess I'm portraying that negative end of things of saying, you know, do, is that something we want to do? Do we want to go backwards on this? Because again, I'm not really sure, you know, as to the possibility of the high school and setting a precedence with the high school, seeing that they might come to the council also and make a request. But I do know that if we backtrack a bit, by 2008 and 2009, the Cottonwood Clippers organization, and I know it was a different organization with a different board at that time period, did specifically identify a large amount of money if we proceeded with building a $1.3 million pool. The $1.3 million pool was paid, I think entirely by the city of Cottonwood. And there were no funds that were brought forth, I think maybe $400 or $500 by the Clippers into the process. And that was a promise that they would go out for one year and try to raise funds for that project and that did not happen. And then I think that as we look at cost recovery, we don't really look at it with the pool, but pools are giant black holes and they do eat an awful lot of energy. And again, operations are a big proponent of the cost of the facility and that's what we're trying to do every year, is try to gain on that that we lose. And I do know that this is a great project and I'm not taking anything away from good projects for, for the city, for our youth and our kids, but my only thought would be to maybe postpone, you know, the project, do a project postponement until maybe the additional funds are raised instead of eliminating or waiving those fees for this year because again, the city of Cottonwood is still that cheap date in many ways and shapes and form. And it's one of those things whereby we try to gain back as much as we possibly can as it pertains to operations costs. And that's what this is. This goes directly into our operations costs and helps mitigate and minimize those costs. So I wanted to provide that with council as to the opposite end of the scale here. And are there any questions?
Any questions, council members? Yes, Mr. Ilinski?
I, I see your perspective on this and I think we've put ourselves in a bad situation where we've for years been softies and have really not, not, not done what we should in terms of charging what we actually should be charging to meet our, our costs. And I know that costs are rising, you know, as utility costs go up, of course, it's going to be more expensive to operate the pumps and heat the pool, well, not that we're heating the outdoor pool, but it, you know, just
But we do.
Are we heating that? Toward the end of the, outside of the season?
The outdoor pool actually starts, we start the heating process in April. And normally, it's the end of April and into May. I think we had some problems this year with actually changing out some heater cores because they were old, the replacements, so we had to pay for all of that, getting those heater cores onboard. But yes, we pay for the heating of the pool because at nighttime, we lose about, probably close to anywhere from 2 to 5 million BTUs into the atmosphere. And that's British thermal units. For those people who understand heating is that we still are a desert atmosphere and as a high desert atmosphere, we lose an awful lot into the atmosphere every night from, from the loss of heat. So we have to heat the pool again every, every morning. So that's one thing we had to do until probably the temperatures get closer into, what, the 100 degree mark?
Eighties.
Eighties, okay. So eighties to nineties, all right.
Yeah. Well, I guess my point is that we know that costs are rising, but I think we've all dragged our feet. And I've said this, you know, many times before in getting our, our prices up to where they need to be. That being said, I don't think, I think that the Clippers have come up with a really creative solution that's a great benefit not only to them, but to the city. And it wouldn't cost us that much money. I don't feel like it's fair to hold them, to stymie their efforts because we've been dragging our heels on, on, on getting our cost recovery where it needs to be. I think they've, they've come up with a creative solution. The city is the one that would own that and it would benefit not just the Clippers, but everyone that uses the outdoor pool facility. I see it as, as a good opportunity and I, you know, that being said, I think we charge way too little for what we offer. And I really think we need to seriously examine that and quit backpedaling, but actually seriously examine it and get our prices up where they need to be, which would maybe be a little foreshadowing for the Clippers and the high schools as well that, you know, we need to charge what, what it's worth.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I actually am inclined to support the request. I understand everything you said. Because again, the community benefit of the Clippers for, and what they do and what we would get for it, the shade structure would benefit anyone who uses the pool. So to extend beyond the Clippers and we're getting an upgrade on our pool paid for by the Clippers. So that's why I'm inclined to support the request.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I have a question for Steve. I have a great granddaughter that's joining the team and this white skin will be sitting under the shade. Do I have a conflict?
No, Madam Vice Mayor, unless you choose to declare one, I don't think you have a statutory conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I have a, just a real quick
Yes, Mr. Dowling?
It's not specifically related. Do we have a cover on the pool?
No, we do not.
Okay, have we looked at the possibility of a cover, the cost of that versus the thermal unit loss?
We have in the past.
Separate topic, sorry about that.
No, that's, that's quite all right, council. We've had a pool in the, pool cover in the past and the biggest problem we've always had was the cost of actually dragging the pool cover across and then putting it away. The cost basically with guard needs kind of overrode the, the actual cost of having it. So we just, we, when the pool cover wore out, we just eliminated it. And we no longer looked at them. They do have them out right now to where they're automatic and automated systems, but they are extremely expensive for a pool our size.
I'll bring it up later, sorry.
All right.
Just curious.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, council member Norman?
So if I understand this correctly, the shade they're proposing would just be over the seating area, correct?
There's a central area out right now that does have the shade and it has a shade structure, it has a metal shade structure that was put in place in 2009/10. And then what they would do is, is their two structures would be alongside both sides of that. Is that, that's
So it would extend it?
Upper deck, okay.
And all the way out to the Yeah, the upper deck is over there. So when the Clippers are not using the pool, say just a normal day, when kids are swimming, do we have people sitting in that area?
There's people, yeah, there's, there's people normally during the timeframe, most of the time, parents will sit underneath the current awning canopy when their kids are participating in usually swim programs for learn to swim. And so that's where they normally will sit. And so they are using the current shade structure, yes. This is in addition to when you have more of an outpouring of a lot of people. This would help. Right now, that pretty well suffices for the amount of people that we have with the outdoor facility. And it is warm under there, no doubt. I mean, I've been underneath there before and it is, it is warm. And this shade structure that they're talking about would be more of a canopy style. It would be cooler on that end of things.
What's the height of one of those canopies? I mean, is there?
That I don't know.
We're not, we don't know in that scale. We look at the company, we use this company, we have these shades taken down during the beach season after Mingus has done it. And then we have them replaced, we put the stars in the past, and these canopies. That would be at our own cost, yeah, that would be our own life.
Okay. So if you guys want to talk, we need you to come up to the lectern. And the reason being, when they try to transcribe the minutes, they won't be able to hear you. So do you want to, and Mr. Rodriguez, did you want to speak?
Well, I was going to answer, I mentioned, I think Dan told us last time, those type of canopies last about 10 years. They're guaranteed for like 15, but they're not going to last 15. If you got a good 10 years off it, if you If you got a good 10 years off it, and if you would be taking them off, they might even last 15 years. But what I wanted to interject here, and I know that maybe they're, I'm going to try to walk the fine line between conflict and because I do have two kids in the Clippers, and I am also overdoing finances. When they first came to me, I looked at it a little bit differently. I looked at it as a grant for the city of Cottonwood. We provide a bunch of, we provide a lot of people, we believe a lot of things for a lot of people, and though they are great for the community, they're not putting anything back into the city for everyone to enjoy. In this particular case, most likely handled police department grants or fire department grants or parks and rec grants, this one is kind of like, $4,000 is a matching portion to endeavor that's available for every single, you know, both children as well as adults and soldier guys. But the thing is, is I think that it, what made it hard for me was, one, of course, I think I've been conflicted a bit, but the second part is that it's hard to turn out something that someone's willing to give you a lot more for just a few coins, and it's not that they're asking for it to be removed permanently, they're just asking it to be waived this year. As a matter of fact, when they first came to us, and we need to have engineering, an engineering done, one of the things we tried because it is, they are putting quite a bit of substantial money into this. We talked about maybe getting our engineers and maybe looking at one of the local engineers to see if they can do it, you know, free of charge and help them out as well as maybe help his, help themselves and the city out. So that's the way I'm looking at it. I understand that we do have to raise the fees, and plenty of these, I don't know if he's going to go ahead and nail me on this one. But, you know, the way I treat it is, this is a matching type of a grant. They're willing to put up, well, they're giving more money than we're willing to give up, and thus-
I did read that it would actually come out of the general fund rather than, Richard's budget is shot, he doesn't have any more money to give. So is, did I read that somewhere?
It's all general fund money.
Oh, okay. So it's going to come out of his budget, then? It's not going to come from somewhere else?
Yeah.
So what if, so what if the council, we have a little, we have that much left, what if it came out of the council's budget?
When it ends up doing, it ends up, it's, all we do is, we have, we go to our pool revenue, that's where that money goes, okay? And the thing is that all we are going to be is we're not going to put any more revenue. He's not raising any more on his expenses, we just don't have that revenue. Will we miss it? We miss every penny we do out. But I'm just saying that, if they, if we had applied for a grant for those coverings and got it, we would be giving out $4,000 in more to acquire that grant. And we do that day in, day out with the city of Cottonwood, when we receive more than what we put in.
So it doesn't make sense, I'm not getting it to take it out of the council's contingency and put it into Richard's budget?
No.
It doesn't make sense?
No.
You're right.
Well, it's not increasing, it's not increasing in just not reducing it. Oh, he's going to have a shortfall probably because we do have to account for those. But bottom line is, it's $4,000, and we're getting, we're going to be getting a lot more bank for the bucks than what we're giving up.
If you look at it at the total, it's two and a half percent of the yearly, of $156,000, it's two and a half percent of that, roughly, so.
I think the salient point is that we're getting a $13,000 or so structure, improvement to our pool, and we're not giving money away, we're waiving a one-time fee of $4,000 that will be absorbed by the general fund.
I also like to find out, I mean, I know that specifically, Mr. Faust had brought up Mingus. I mean, I think Mingus has come to the city requesting reduction in funds with nothing to give you.
Yeah.
They've not come to you saying, "We're going to do this, if you can please reduce our fees or waive them altogether." We do fund these all year long, well, two each year, and it has taken us at least four to five years to raise the money to get out now. We're talking $2,000 a year, and that's pretty much all we've got. So, and we're kind of of the opinion that this is not approved, we probably won't come back next year asking for, or coming to you with this proposal. We'll probably turn around and put that money into our coaches. We will probably take our $10,000 and really use it elsewhere. And it's not, I mean, it's not, I mean, I guess I feel like if it's not appealing now, it probably won't be a year from now, and who knows if it is more. I mean, we might just always be chasing that bid that's now, instead of $13,000, it's $15,000, and we never really get ourselves out of it. But we do know that, you know, Mingus has come to them and has come to you and asked for a reduction in whatever they were charged this last year, I'm not sure what that would be, but I know that they came and said they just couldn't pay it. And so I think we feel like our situation is really more beneficial to everyone and not just us not being able to come up with funds. We can pay our $4,000, but there would not be any shades this year with us.
Okay, Mr. Ilinski?
I wanted to bring up Mr. Faust's point again about not setting a precedent, and I understand, again, where you're coming from with that, but I think this is a unique situation where, hopefully, this would be a precedent that we set where somebody asks for a little bit of money and they give us something much greater in return, so, sorry it had to be you.
I can see. But the thing is, Bruce will be tall, but I'll hold this over his head for long.
You have chairs.
You'd be on a step ladder when you do it.
I know that feeling.
There is a member of the public, Dr. Richards, would like to speak on this item?
Dr. Bob Richards, 1495 East Questview Drive, Cottonwood, Arizona. I am a citizen, I paid taxes to the city of Cottonwood to support the WEC Center. I'm also on the Parks and Rec Commission, and I can tell you, I think pretty definitely, if this was brought before the Parks and Rec Commission, we would not recommend it. You, the city council, have put a spending expenses to cut, and now you're asking to give somebody a break. We give too many breaks. We give Mingus a break. I do agree that the Clippers, for the first time, have been paying their full share of using the pool. Mingus not even come close, I think it's zero. We gave Mingus a break on their high school graduation party. The academy had to pay full fare or to have their graduation party at-
Being one of the academies.
Cottonwood WEC Center. Now, I don't think it will hurt to keep those shade structures with the Clippers so that they can raise more money. You aren't going to remember whether you had the shade structures in 2013 or if you had them in 2015. You'll never remember that. In contrary to what Councilman Pratt said, this isn't going to bring more people to the swimming pool, it's just going to provide shade for those that are there watching events. You want us to save money? We're trying to do that. And now you're telling us, well, we're going to give another discount, and it's a grant, it's rationalization as far as I am concerned. Give them, have them continue to do their fundraising. Yes, the cost may go up by $500, but whether the shade is there two years from now or three years from now, it won't make a lot of difference, but for Parks and Rec people, the commission, and those that are working at the WEC Center who are trying to hold down expenses, you know, I think that this is not an appropriate thing to do. As you know, as Richard stated several years ago, different board, they came and they said, "We're going to raise money for a new pool." They raised miniscule. They came with tears in their eyes, asking the city of Cottonwood to please build us this pool, cost close to $1 million, basically for their benefit, and the council did that. I think it's time to quit doing those things for, quote, "special interests." And I think their idea, the digital water, shade structures is fine, but when they get the money raised to do that, that's fine, but I don't think they should be discounted their cost for utilizing the pool. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Richards. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, from what I understand, it's, it says that this $4,000 would be absorbed by the general fund, so that really wouldn't affect our recreation center costs, would it?
That's one thing, I'm not sure if it actually does because the pool, we keep it a little bit separate, so it doesn't really affect it. We account for the recreation center cost separately than the pool.
Right.
But the pool itself, we do, we do review that every so often.
And, you know, as far as the special favor, again, I don't think I ever said it would bring more people there. In fact, I know I didn't say that, I think we can probably get that in the records. But it's going to, again, we are getting something for that. We're not just saying we're waiving the fee, we're actually getting an improvement to our pool that will benefit everyone who uses the pool, not just the swim team.
Any other comments?
Thinking back on the improvements to the pool, we were going to have to put a lot of money in that black hole anyway. The pool was deteriorated, it was, what, 25 years old when we did that? So we were going to have to do it, and it did not make any sense to build a new pool and not make it larger with a community growing the way it is. So Clippers had a lot to do with it, tears in the eyes, whatever, but we were going to have to improve the pool, and it just made sense while we were doing it to enlarge it also, put the diving board back in and the whole nine yards. I, for one, I support it. Of course, I'm a swimmer, and my great-granddaughter will now be a swimmer, but I've sat out there and watched the other little people swim that are in my family, and you roast. And when you've got ivory white skin like mine, you'd make a lot of trips to dermatologists. So this doesn't just benefit the Clippers, it benefits people like me so I can go and enjoy watching the little people swim in the pool and watching the meat. So I have a personal reason for it possibly, I don't think it's a conflict, but since the price of the million-dollar pool came up, I just wanted to clarify that we were going to have to spend money on that pool anyway, and it just made sense to spend the money and enlarge it. And we're getting, it's not like we're giving them $4,000 or not letting them pay the $4,000, they're turning around and giving us something in return, and it's, I think it'd be a great benefit for our pool.
Any other comments? Any other comments from members of the public? Mr. Pratt?
Can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I move to approve authorizing a fee waiver of the Cottonwood Clipper Swim Team's charges of $4,000 for use of the Cottonwood Outdoor Pool Facility in exchange for the Clippers installing shade structures at the pool at their expense.
Mr. Pratt made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The deputy clerk pointed out, does the council want to address the request for the permit waivers?
Oh.
Yeah, that wasn't in the motion, should I add that to the motion?
And in all fairness, it was not in your packets. This was something that was distributed to you at the beginning of tonight's meeting, but it was not anything that was reviewed by staff.
So can we deal with that, if it's not really on the agenda then?
Well, the agenda, the rule is, you can deal with matters related to the matter that's on the agenda. This is related to the agenda, that's not to dictate what your decision is.
Can I add on to my motion then?
You could.
You could maybe just make a new one, or you want to change it?
I move to approve waiver of the building permits for the shade structures for the Cottonwood Clippers swim team that they will be erecting at their own expense.
Second. So Councilmember Pratt, I made the motion, and the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So we had two motions for that item. Okay. Item number four, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona through the Department of Transportation for funds to purchase roadway replacement signs. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Most of you may be aware, the city received a grant this year for $150,000 through ADOT and NACOG, and the grant is for what's called HSIP funds, Highway Safety Improvement Funds. And so it's basically to be used for some sort of safety improvement on city streets. We originally, we know council very, you know, treasures very much sidewalks, so we originally looked at installing sidewalks somewhere. Unfortunately, due to both time restraints and because if we do any sort of groundbreaking activity, because this is federal money, we have to do an environmental study. So even though this is only a small $150,000 project, the environmental study would cost nearly $30,000, a substantial portion of it, thus decreasing how much work we can actually get done. So we started looking at what projects we could do and not use the environmental study, and basically the federal rules say, as long as you don't break any ground, you don't need the environmental study. So working with the Verde Valley Transportation Planning Organization, we came up with a few ideas. The first was to replace any non, not non-standard, non-compliance regulatory street signs. So regulatory signs are signs like stop signs, speed limit signs, yield signs, and there's a new standard out saying, basically dealing with the reflectivity of those signs, and many of our older signs are unfortunately no longer compliant. So the decision the staff made was to use this money to replace all of our regulatory street signs, and in the process of putting that grant together, we realized we weren't going to use the whole $150,000, so we started looking at what else out there can we use this towards. And I know something else that's been near and dear to the council's heart before is crosswalks. So we started looking at thermoplastic crosswalks. Again, we're still not breaking ground, we checked with NACOG, that's not a concern. So in addition to crosswalks, we are also going to be installing thermoplastic longitudinal lines. So these are the white line, you might see if we're bike lane, or the center yellow stripe. Basically, that will, the thermoplastic's going to last a lot longer, so not only be more reflective, last longer, therefore safer, but decrease city funds, I'm sorry, city costs, goodbye. Sorry. So actually, I've strayed into the second topic.
But that's okay, because it's, they're really so interrelated.
And they are related.
And at the NACOG meeting, it was just one amount, it wasn't broken down, so.
Yep, and originally, we applied, they were one grant. Because ADOT felt they were not related enough, they asked us to separate into two separate applications, therefore two separate IGAs. That's why you have two items before you tonight, one dealing strictly with signs, one dealing strictly with pavement markings.
So, yes, Mr. Pratt?
I hate to say it again, it's not going to cost the city anything. It's going to improve the appearance of our city. It is a no-brainer, without a doubt.
And there's not even a match to have to dig up, so.
There's no match.
Why would we turn down a grant to improve our city?
Yeah, make it safer.
Make it safer.
As far as, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just waiting at anybody that wants to speak or any members of the public that would maybe like to talk about it. If not, I'd entertain a motion on both items one at a time.
So I'll move to approve intergovernmental agreement, JPA 13-0000750 with ADOT for a grant to replace sign panels throughout the city.
Second.
So Councilmember Ilinski made the motion, Councilmember Pratt seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make the next motion.
Okay, Mr. Dowling, please.
I move to approve IGA, JPA 13-0000752 with ADOT for a grant to enhance the street striping and pavement markings throughout the city.
Second. So Mr. Dowling made the motion, Councilmember Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number six, award of a bid for an on-call design contract with CNS companies for Cottonwood Airport design projects. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City staff has gone through an advertisement process. Basically, we requested statements of qualifications from engineering and design firms to be an on-call design consultant for the airport. Three firms responded, and we viewed the statements of qualifications from all three of those design firms, felt very comfortable with that one firm kind of stood out above the rest for several reasons. One, they've been the design firm, the last design firm that had an on-call contract with the Cottonwood Airport. They also have a subconsultant who did the Cottonwood Airport master plan, so we felt very comfortable with them. And the third thing that we really felt they were heads and tails above the other consultants is they had the most experience with designing AWAS, or automated weather observation systems. is they had the most experience with designing AWAS, or automated weather observation systems, which is the first task we're going to ask them to take, to handle, basically. In fact, we've already, they've already begun working on this because they feel just getting some legwork in, working on the AWAS system. So we really kind of asked them to put some special effort into their AWAS and their statements of qualifications. They not only worked on Payson's AWAS, but several other AWASs throughout northern Arizona and throughout the entire state of Arizona.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I noticed there's, it just says general fund as the firm services are required according to, or relating to what it would cost. Is there any estimate on what we'd be spending per year with this company?
There is no estimate, because it'll be depending on the number of projects we're working on at a time. For instance, right now, we have about a $110,000 grant for the design of the AWAS. Now, there is a 10% match for that, so the city will be matching that, which is about $13,000.
$11,000.
$11,000, thank you. So the city will be matching 10% of those design funds. But it will be dependent year to year. So for instance, I think in a couple of years, we're going to talk about some overlay projects and a few other things. So it'll be handled on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
And I believe the scope of services has to come back to the city each time, is that correct, for each project?
I think it depends upon the amount of the procurement. I think if it's connected with a, with a grant and it's large and it meets the threshold, then it would go back to council.
And that threshold's $50,000?
Yes.
Mr. Ilinski?
Is it fair to say that most, most of the monies that we'll be paying this consultant with would be through grant money?
Yeah, approximately at least 90%.
Okay.
Yes.
Any comments from the public on this item? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Dalling, please.
I move to award the airport on-call design contract to CNS companies and authorize the manager to execute the agreement on the city's behalf, subject to approval of the final form of agreement by the city attorney.
Second.
Mr. Dalling made the motion, Mr. Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number seven, approval of a governor's office of highway safety grant for the purchase of two mobile data computers for the police department's mobile command unit. Mr. Mc, or Commander McCouch, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The Cottonwood Police Department is seeking approval to accept a grant funds from the governor's office of highway safety for our DUI patrols. The governor's office has provided the police department with many opportunities and funded $1,000 of DUI patrols. Four years ago, the governor's office allowed us to purchase a mobile command unit, which we use on many DUI details and for other special events. This funding was remaining, the funds that we are seeking through this grant is remaining from the fiscal year 2013 awards, and they were, that were distributed in September of last year. The governor's office highway safety director, Gutierrez, contacted all agencies and stated that there were cycle funds available, and if the chief would write a letter with his request and equipment, that the director would try to fund that request. The Cottonwood Police Department requested the purchase of two mobile data computers to put inside of the mobile command unit to ease in processing DUIs. And the purchase is 100% funded through the governor's office, there's no city funds needed for this. Is there any question?
No way, Pratt.
It's another no-brainer, I can't help it. We are not paying anything to even make our city streets even safer and take people off the streets that shouldn't be driving and protecting our citizens. And it doesn't cost us any money, why wouldn't we do it?
We're actually getting back just a slice of the funds that have been swept.
Yeah.
All right? So we're getting a little bit back.
Getting a little bit back. I just had a little teeny question down here in the problem identification and resolution. It talks about being the largest city in the Verde Valley and serves as the hub. Cottonwood has a population of more than eight, 11,265. Then it says with the Verde Village, Verde Santa Fe, and Cornville combined to bring in another 11,000 people. And I think that Verde Village is actually a little larger than we are, so they're 11,000 plus. And Verde Santa Fe, I think, is at least 1,000 people, maybe more. And Cornville's about, I thought it was about 5,000, somewhere in there. So it might be a few more than 11,000 more people coming into town and relying on our police department and our fire department when they're in here doing their business and such. So just something you might want to look at next time. But it looks perfect, and I agree. And did you want to add anything to Terrence's no-brainers?
She just wanted to give me a hard time about it.
Give you a hard time. So, Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve the governor's office of highway safety grant, contract number 2013-164-063, and authorize the city manager and police chief to sign said contract.
Second. Okay, Councilmember Pratt made the motion, Councilmember Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much for, for seeking out these grants. I know it takes some time to write them, and we appreciate it, Commander McCouch, so.
And helping keep our people safe.
Yes, absolutely. I move to pay the claims and adjustments. Second. The mayor made the motion, Councilmember Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Third. So the mayor made the motion, Councilmember Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.